Okay, great. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight and being with us for our first town hall of 2016, the 11th one since the Congressmen started last year. So just want to give you a quick rundown of the program. We'll start off with a PowerPoint presentation where the Congressman's going to do a legislative update. We're going to focus on the President's FY 2017 budget. And then, I know, very exciting things. And then after that, after the presentation's over, we're going to go into Q and A. And the way Q and A is going to work is it's first come, first served for the question. So as we receive them, we've been numbering them. If anyone has questions still, please raise your hand and staff will come around and grab the question from you. And with that, thank you very much, and Congressman, it's all you.
So that gentleman, because he didn't introduce himself, is Pat Joyce, like in James Joyce, almost as good a writer. And he works in our Walnut Creek office. Most of the time, our Walnut Creek office is right across the street from the Bart Station at 101 Ignatius, Ignatius, Ignatio Valley Road. You can tell I was raised by the Jesuits. I went Jesuit high school and college, so I say Ignatius. And then Chanelle Scale Preston is our terrific district director. She's in the back and she runs both the Walnut Creek office and the Richmond office. So I'm going to run through this PowerPoint. It's 37 pages. If I go through some of it, particularly when we get to the budget part, I'm going to try to go through that quickly because we won't have time for questions if I don't go through it. But it's available. Do we have any hard copies here? No. But it's available on our website. Feel free to go there. We update it frequently. So it's informative. I like information. But in a PowerPoint, it's probably a little more than we could do in what we hope to be about a half an hour and leave an hour for questions, but we may go a little over. So as Pat just said, I just completed my first year in Congress. You don't have to applaud at everything. I'm a little worried about this crowd. This is too friendly. And in that regard, this isn't meant to be, I mean, I always appreciate, I love doing town halls, and we'll talk about the outreach we do. This is meant to be, everybody has a different opinion. You can disagree, obviously. I just ask that we do it civilly and respectfully. Oftentimes, I'm constantly reminded of a great line that H.L. Mencken once said in reply to a critic, and he said, "You know, you may be right." So frequently, I've found out that some of my critics, if they aren't completely, I don't change and become completely in agreement, at least you start to understand how other people feel and their perspective, and oftentimes, you have a better understanding for your position as well. So with that, I'm just going to dive into the PowerPoint. And when we get to the end, I'm going to let Pat sort of take charge and I will answer the questions. Holy mackerel. Pardon me, I've got allergies and a cold. This is new. So the staff in Washington, either they have more money or they're doing some kind of technical hallucinogenics. This is the map of the district. It's a wonderful district in many ways. It's particularly, can you all see on this side? I don't want to get in your way. It's all in one county, which is nice, all in Contra Costa County. It's also very diverse, but it's also easy to serve. So as many of you will remember, a few years ago, there was an initiative on the ballot, well, it was long, more than a few years ago, but every 10 years, we're required, any district, whether it's a local water district or any board that's elected by districts, has to be reapportioned in the Board of Supervisors. When I was on that, we had to do it. And it's based on making sure that the populations in the districts of the governing body are more or less equal. And then there are some other laws in terms of equal representations of different minority groups. And then there are also direction about, it's supposed to be contiguous, it's not supposed to cross boundaries as much as it can. Well, in the old days, congressional maps and up until the initiative passed, and state legislative maps were done by the state legislature. There was just a Supreme Court decision agreeing that independent commissions could be done and not have the legislature do it. So we, in California, in our wisdom, went to an independent redistricting commission. They did, I think, by almost all critics' standard, and I would agree with this, a very good job. There are some idiosyncrasies that you wish were better, but I think they did a good job and it took the partisanship out of it. There's a national effort right now to make them more of a national in every state, have independent commissions do it. So when the census comes out after the decade, then the commission will start to meet again. We'll have public meetings and they'll redo these districts, not based on where the incumbent lives or anything to do with the existing members. It's purely based on what their direction is from the voters, which is to make them as functional as possible and get rid of the gerrymandered districts. And the old ones were very gerrymandered. And both parties, when they were in charge, were responsible for that. So this is a wonderful district. One thing you never think about, or I didn't until I got into government, was it's important for them to be well thought out because the staff that does most of the work, most of our work is not political, most of it is constituent work. When offices do a good job, whether Republicans or Democrats, they're responding to constituents have issues with governmental agencies. And it's not about whether you're, what's your ideology is, it's just being responsive to your constituents. It's easier when they're not gerrymandered. I remember a district, the old Ellen Tausher district that I ran for in 2009 and lost to John Garamendi. You drove from Dixon to Livermore, in and out of multiple districts. And so for the staff to try to physically, you know, a lot of the work's done on the phone and online, but just when you have community meetings, it's hard to do when you're spread out all over the place. So anyways, that's the district. This is just my background. Long time ago, 1988, the Concord Chamber of Commerce, I was in the restaurant business my other career. I owned a restaurant in Concord for 30 years. And the Chamber of Commerce, which I was active in, came in and said, "We think you should go on the planning commission." And I can still remember Howard Jenkins, and I said, "No, if I go on the planning commission, you're going to ask me to run for city council, and I don't want to do that." So maybe I should have listened. No. So I've been fortunate, I think, because I've seen every level of government. So it does come in handy sometimes. And then I've been on a variety of secondary appointments from those. This is really, I think, I'm particularly proud of this. We've always done this in every office I've had. I think it's partially because I was in the retail business. We have performance standards in the office when it comes to responding within a certain period of time and opening a file. And I think it works well because you get people who like to be, they're motivated to show that they're doing work, not just punching a time clock. So they do a lot of work and there's not that many people in the office. The last bullet is, and this probably from being in the retail business too, I like to do outreach. And we're back in the district this week. I go back on Sunday night. And I love DC, but it's much more fun to be here in California for a variety of regions. I just briefly, I've always tried to, if any of you, because some of you are familiar faces, frequent flyers will start to try to do something for people who come to lots of these. Just, there's about five to 10 pages of just an overview of the things that drive us in particular. And of course, the economy, I think, is probably the number one thing. It usually is for Americans unless we're in a situation where we're in an international conflict. The good news is that the overall, what you see in these, in the next few charts, is that the Bay Area, California, United States is doing better, particularly when it comes to unemployment, getting people employed. But we have challenges and there's lots, you hear this in the presidential debates on both sides, the issues of wage stagnation is a huge problem in the United States. Some of it's a function that we've become more efficient. Technology and manufacturing has changed dramatically from when I was a kid. So it's, we're trying to figure out what the wages are for the work, particularly since the manufacturing base has changed so much and so much of it's gone overseas. This is a graph just of where we've gone. I don't, it comes from, and all of these are attributed. So this is the Department of Labor that just relates to after the recession, we dug ourselves a big hole and we've come out of it when it comes to creation of jobs. But again, I would put a big asterisk on that because when you look at wages and benefits in terms of their purchasing power, they have largely been stagnant for most Americans since the 70s. You haven't had enough increase in proportionately to wages and benefits for most working class Americans. California, as you often hear, is really a remarkable place. Now that I'm in the Congress, I look back at my time in local government here and the state legislature and go, boy, that was really fun. You could get something done in those places. So the economy continues to do very well here. I, you know, I'm not a native of California. I came out here when I graduated from college and decided to stay. My native state is Massachusetts, but I am a true believer in California and the California dream. Our gross domestic product is $2.3 trillion when you consider the population of California. It's really quite remarkable. All those other countries there obviously are much larger than us. Russia, I think, is about 125 million people. So this is a pretty dynamic place and we have many challenges. Any of you have to drive anywhere, you understand that transportation's a huge problem. Housing costs, particularly for younger people, is a huge challenge as well. And this, you can see just the unemployment rate. We're doing well in that regard too. Actually, in the Bay Area, when it comes to wages, we're doing better in the aggregate, but we still have problems in certain professions, more what would traditionally be blue collar, non-college educated professions. But even with that, my two kids are 33 and 30, and you know, they both live in Los Angeles, so I miss them greatly, but they don't have the same kind of opportunities that certainly I did when I got out of college in terms of being able to have the purchasing power of buying a house. Yesterday in the news, they said the median price of a house in the Bay Area was now $650,000. I remember when I bought my first house in Pleasant Hill and it was like $75,000. And you know, I don't know if you can do that nowadays. So even when you consider inflation. This just, as obviously, it's just the whole map of the United States. You can see, you know, the country is generally is doing much better. We're doing a little bit better on unemployment. But you can see West Virginia, Louisiana, Alabama, Mississippi, Nevada, they're struggling a little bit more. In California, it's hard for me to believe that when I got elected to the legislature was 2006, when I got elected to the State Senate and was on the Budget Committee there, that was 2008, when the recession basically blew a hole in the bottom of all of our budgets, including the state of California. We had a $45 billion deficit. And it's really remarkable to see how resilient this is. I think Governor Brown has done a good job, particularly with the rainy day fund. Many governors in different, both Republicans and Democrats, tried to adhere to that for years. And you really have to have it because you know they're going to have swings. And when you don't have it, for one thing, your credit rating is not as good. And he's actually got the credit rating up, which saves us all money, all of us money. Okay. Well, that's a cool new deal too. And again, you can just see the labor force growing since January of '05. The Bay Area, I started something called Innovation, the Human Condition. I've been wandering mostly around the Bay Area, visiting places like Twitter and Facebook and Google and Apple, but also going to the laboratories, national laboratories. And it's just spectacular, I think, the things that is happening in terms of innovation and research. In neuroscience, in the, you don't hear about those things as much, but you go over to UCSF, they're about to supplant Johns Hopkins is having the most amount of National Institute for Health grants of any medical research facility in the United States. So I, you know, we should be proud of the institute, both the public and the private institutions we have here. But some of the remarkable things are, a third of all the venture capital in the U.S., and this is consistent for basically the last 10 years, comes to the Bay Area. Half of it comes to California, but a whole third of all the venture capital investment in the U.S. comes here and it goes into all kinds of fields. And we really are a generator of, for a variety of reasons, lots of new ideas, most of them fairly successful. There are noted failures. And the last bullet is the highest economic productivity in the nation, almost twice, twice the U.S. average. So for all of our struggles, we should be grateful, and I know most people are, that we live here. These are a little bit, the next few are hard to follow, but basically, it's just looking from 1990 to 2025 productions, predictions in different kind of, different professions and where the outlook is. So if anybody's got kids or young kids who are looking for careers, this is probably the next few graphs are good things to look at. Because you'll see that it goes from this, where you've got software, internet services, all sort of new economy things, to the next graph where you see, as I mentioned, manufacturing and other things have actually slipped the other way. Again, this is just a more detailed, please, this comes out well enough that you can see it, because lots of times these get too detailed and it's too hard to see on the PowerPoint. But you can, you can see, the top one is reflective of particularly the housing. I mean, we see it here in Walnut Creek with all these infill condominiums. And so there's a lot of demand for construction and housing. There's a huge demand for transportation and infrastructure that we can talk about later, but both the federal level and the state level, we have to find a new revenue source, particularly for transportation, because the gas taxes, as our fleet has become more efficient and because the cost of, the gasoline's come down, it's left a giant hole in our predicted budget. So today, there was an article in a paper where the California Transportation Commission revised their estimate for the next couple of years, and it's at, I think it's $715 million short. And it in fact, it impacts us locally, and they were using the example of Highway 4 and 680. Having been involved in transportation, we need to fix that intersection for a variety of reasons. It's dangerous, but it's carrying so much more and they're probably going to have to put that off longer than they had hoped for because of the fact that both the federal government, the state government, because of gas tax going down, needs to find either another revenue source or we definitely need more sustainable funds for transportation. And this just shows that although we are unique, we are still part of, you can't extract a state from the national economy. So this is just shows you that California and the U.S. are tracking pretty closely. We're doing better, but we also did worse. So one of the things about California, because our state taxes are so reliant on capital gains tax, we tend to be more of a roller coaster. So when the tech boom hit, we, people who were making money in investments were, had less money to be taxed on. Same thing with the, with the housing industry. So when we go down, we go down more dramatically than most states who rely more on property tax and oftentimes, sales tax. This is the makeup of the Congress right now. We are in the 114th Congress. You can see 188 Democrats, I am a Democrat, 246 Republicans. The magic number is 218, I think, for the majority. And then of course, for super majority, it's larger. So that's the way it will be until there's another election. And most people predict that the majority-minority relationship will continue. The forecaster says a potential for the Senate to flip from being Republican to Democratic. But one never knows, you know? Who would have thought that Donald Trump would be a presidential candidate? All kidding aside, I mean, even people who like him, who would have guessed, you know, five, 10 years ago? Somebody said that to you that'd say, "Oh, it's a joke."
It's only 4 or 34, not 435.
Ah, there's one missing. If you can see on the bottom, Speaker Boehner, when he resigned. So they have to have a special election. Could you win the prize for most observant? But, but we tricked you. Right down here where you can't see, it's, is an asterisk that says Speaker Boehner. If you remember when Speaker Boehner left, then there has to be a special election for him to be replaced. Congress is unique that way. If somebody leaves the U.S. Senate, they're appointed by the governor. Congress, the Constitution, its wisdom said, "Nobody's going to appoint members of the House of Representatives. They have to be, they only can get their job by getting the electorate to vote for them." So if you leave in the middle of your term, there has to be a special election. These are my committee assignments. Much of the work you do in any of these legislative bodies or in local government happen at the, not at the full council meeting in this instance. The final decisions are made here, but much of the day-to-day work and the things that actually are, oftentimes where the problems are solved are committees or subcommittees. In the legislature, there are committees. You don't have subcommittees. Here in Congress, you have, this is sort of the traditional model. If you're in a, on an elite committee like appropriations or energy and commerce and health, you get usually one committee assignment. I, as a freshman, the first committee was sort of a coup. Actually, was able to replace Congressman Miller on the education and workforce where he spent most of his 40 years. He was the chair of that committee. He was the ranking member. And actually, Speaker Boehner and he worked closely because they both, their careers somewhat tracked there in terms of either being ranking or chair. I love that committee. It's fascinating. The future of the country really in many ways is defined by what we do on education. And then oversight, I've always liked oversight. I think it should be nonpartisan. When you're in local government, it's nonpartisan because you're, and I think this is really the function of most government agencies. They should be making sure there's proper oversight as representatives of citizens to make sure that the organizations work as efficiently as they can be. That, it shouldn't make a difference whether a liberal Democrat or conservative Republican. You have different approaches to it, as it should be, but ultimately, you're looking at, how do you make the government work better? Unfortunately, the last few years, this has been more partisan than I think most people would like, the last 10 years or so. But we have a new chairman as of last year, and we've, I think we've been pretty well, probably about 80% of it's been pretty bipartisan. This is just going to be an explanation of, I hope, yeah, there we go, it works. Things that we've been working on the first year. If you've read about this, this is the Every Student Succeeds Act. For some reason, government bodies feel like they have to come up with acronyms and branding for everything they do. So that's, used to be No Child Left Behind, if you remember. Congressman Miller was an author of that with Senator Kennedy and with George W. Bush. It was a bipartisan effort. There was criticism over the last 14 years, as there are in all things in education. It was meant to bring more accountability, but there was a lot of criticism that it brought accountability that wasn't as efficient as it could be. And a lot of administrators and teachers said that they spent too much teaching to the test. So this was a combination of trying to address those problems. For most of the year, there was general consensus that we wouldn't be able to get it passed, but we were. And I think a lot of credit goes to former Speaker Boehner and also Lamar Alexander from Tennessee, who's the chair of the Senate Committee, Republican, and his ranking member over there. And our staff and Mr. Scott, who's the ranking member, that means Democrat, in our House, people worked really hard to get this passed. This was, the Higher Education Act goes to community colleges and four-year schools, both funding scholarships. So the Perkin Loan Reauthorization was something important to me. We put a lot of work into it. This is a program that's been around for years and it's directed at lower-income people who have really high GPAs and test scores to make sure that they can get into school. It's sort of, you know, it's just, if you perform well and perform as you should, it's not good for the economy and not good for the individual if they can't access the funding, particularly with the cost of education right now. This child nutrition, I think, is very important. Congressman Miller had a big role in this. So as nutritionists found out more about the quality of food, both for cognitive development and for your physical health, we changed the nutritional standards when it comes to kids for subsidized schools, subsidized meals in schools, which changes everything. It's interesting in this, I didn't know this until one of the hearings, this program actually started during World War II because the military came to Congress and said, "Our soldiers are too skinny, so we need to start feeding them better when they're in school." Ironically, a lot of the drive to this came because the Department of Defense came back 10 years ago and said they had the opposite problem, that there were too many, and it is a serious problem, this country. The Center for Disease Control had said obesity particularly, and being overweight is a serious problem for the country. So this is one of the best places, research tells you that you can change those patterns, obviously. So we were, we were really happy to get $30 million in a grant there. We had a Republican partner, only because I opened, I made some comments at one of the hearings when there was a push to move backwards in the nutritional standards and there were comments about how a lot of school districts are struggling with the requirements because they had very old equipment and their staff didn't understand dealing with fresh food. And as somebody who went through that experience in the restaurant business, when I started in the restaurant business in the 70s, the joke in San Francisco was, the most important piece of equipment in a San Francisco restaurant in those days was a can opener. And now you don't have can openers. So it is a sort of a demonstration to me about how our culinary arts have changed in this country and how, I never would have thought that people would have understood the whole movement of farm to fork and that people appreciate that and everything is in prepackaged. So because of that, we partnered with a Republican colleague and we created a $30 million grant, not a whole lot for the whole country, but it basically is directed to helping school districts train their staff to better deal with fresh food, so they won't waste it. I mentioned this briefly, student loan debt is a huge problem for the country. All the research says that if, if we want to deal with inequality and prepare a workforce for a knowledge-based economy, you've got to have more kids, better educated, whether they're getting out of high school or college. The access to college, particularly for working-class families, middle-class families and poorer people is, you get out of school, I was talking to a lawyer today from Danville, who went to UC years ago, and he was just talking about how when he got out of school, he went right into a law firm and didn't have any debt to speak of because when he went to Bolt, basically it was free. Even for kids who weren't well-to-do, if they had good grades, they could get through that and get out. Now you get out and you have over $100,000, $200,000 in debt. My dentist always tells me this, usually when he's peering over my mouth with a drill, even though he's, his kids are getting older, about how much debt he still carries. So it's a problem that we have to fix in this country. And in my first year, I found sort of a niche for myself to work on it. So the bottom comment, I think, is very telling. Student loan debt is growing at a rate of $3,000 per second in this country. So obviously, you can't get out of school and have that kind of burden with housing costs and everything else and expect to get ahead. On the other committee, we have signed onto a letter to the President to ask him to use his administrative authority to make sure that anybody who has a contract with the federal government discloses their campaign contributions. I have a bill, because I've spent most of my time in transportation in my career, I chaired both the Assembly Transportation Committee and the Senate Transportation Committee. It used to be funds rolled out in this country when it came to transportation largely based on political relationships, and we've moved away from that. But this is going to be shocking to you. We haven't moved completely away from it. So I've done a number of bills, both here and in Congress, to require performance standards for all transportation funding. And this is a science that has become more exact. It's not perfect. Washington State does a particularly good job at it. But then the relationship between the performance standards, which should be apolitical and not related to who the contractors are, and then you put out for bid, you get the best value. But then the bill, the bill that I have says that a condition of applying for a transportation request for proposals with any federal funds, anyone on a governing body over that project would, would, the contractor is a condition of applying, so it doesn't have anything to do with your First Amendment rights, it's a condition of your contracting with the federal government. You would, the contractor would have to put on their application any money they've given to, the city councils overseeing some of it, if a Board of Supervisors is of a state legislature. And I just think that's, the more we know about campaign contributions in this country, the better. It's actually, the influence of money in our politics, I would argue, is a real problem in this country and is not good for anybody. Let's see, the fraudulent carmakers, that has to do with Volkswagen. So you know Volkswagen, when I was, when I was a Republican, Pete Wilson appointed me to the California Air Research Forces Board. When Pete, there was, the trucking companies actually put what's called defeat mechanisms, which is what VW did. So that when they were audited by either the U.S. EPA or the California EPA, the computers would show that they were functioning at a level they were supposed to, even though behind the technology, it was not functioning. So that's what happened with Volkswagen. When they passed the U.S. Clean Air Act, they had a carve-out that said, "Nobody could be criminally prosecuted for anything that happens under the Clean Air Act." So it's all fines and I personally think that people would be more responsible if they knew that they were going to be held personally responsible. Some, the VW executives have been, in the sense that most of them have been acquitted or been fired, but like a lot of instances on big businesses, they sort of absorb that cost and they still end up pretty well. And then I personally think, within the culture, people take risks that they shouldn't do and do things that are illegal. So we've been very active on that. And then one of the things I'm hoping that I'll be able to move the ball forward on in my time in Congress is bipartisan effort to do more performance-based budgeting for all agencies. Again, if you're a conservative, you want to save tax money, it's a good thing. If you're a liberal like me and you want to help people and get them off of public assistance, then I think it's a good thing too, if we were as efficient and effective as we can be. So this is the budget process. It's been interesting for me as opposed to California, which It's been interesting for me, as opposed to California, which is very different. And now in California, because of, again, things that the voters did, is working pretty well. But the President offers his budget for the year. In California, the governor offers his budget similarly, but that budget, the legislature responds to, and ultimately, the President or the governor, it's his budget. The legislature negotiates in between. In the federal, in the federal role, the role is predominantly in the Congress. So the President proposes a budget, and then, as you will see, we respond to it, and then we actually adhere to it through the appropriations process, or attempt to adhere to it. So that's briefly it. Again, I'm not, if I keep going at this rate, we'll be here all night, so I'm going to move a little bit quickly through this. This is a very simple chart of how our revenue sources have changed over time. It's much more complicated than this because of exemptions and loopholes. If you had a more, and we'll work on this a little bit, particularly on the corporate side, corporate taxes have actually dropped in the real sense, not in the average, this is the average at the beginning, but because of deductions, they've dropped more dramatically than the 50s than any other part of the budget. And some of that's good, we want to, but when we do breaks for businesses, and we actually did this in the legislature, but it took us a while to do it, it has to be truth-tested at first. It shouldn't just be based on political favors. So if you're going to give a tax credit for the movie industry, for instance, which we did in California, we took a long process to make sure that the actual jobs that they said that they would do by our tax investment would be the truth, so that the Legislative Analyst Office has to constantly monitor that. And if they don't create the benefits to the economy that we assumed, then the tax credit goes away. In the old days, you gave a tax credit, became an entitlement, and you could never get rid of it, whether it was helping an individual company or not, it was hard to get rid of it. So this is where your money goes. And you can see, as you go through these next few charts, and you'll hear this a lot, usually during presidential debates, when they talk about anything in detail occasionally, that much of what the federal government is, is so-called entitlements. Many people don't like that, because for Social Security, we've all paid into it, so it's hardly entitlement when we've had Social Security deducted from our paycheck. But it's not discretionary, so it's taking up a lot of the budget. The largest nondiscretionary part is the defense budget at 22%. So all those other things that sometimes I think people hear about waste, fraud, and abuse, and there is waste, fraud, and abuse, the large organizations, and there should be fewer, but it's actually fairly, in the aggregate, some fairly small amounts. This is really weird. So again, this basically shows you what tax expenditures are and where the revenues go to. So you see them go to Medicaid and Medicare and Social Security and then defense, and then the smallest column there is the rest, transportation, HUD, education, those things. And I'm sorry, I'm going to try to move through these quickly, not just because there's too much detail on here. But again, we're happy you can get this on our website, and if you can't access our website, you can call the office and we'll mail one to you. You hear a lot about the debt and the deficit. So the deficit is what is actually in the budget, that we're not meeting revenue to expenditures. In local government and in state government, you have to, at least in California, constitutionally you're required, to balance your budget. That's not to say that it's, a lot of people in the Contra Costa Times Auditorial Board will argue this, but balanced and really balanced by definition, there's some argument to that, because we would, you know, in tough times, there's a lot of accounting, we're keeping things. But in this instance, because the economy's grown, and somebody who's been supportive of the administration generally, we've been able to drop the deficit quite dramatically. But that's separate from the debt, and you'll see this, the debt is the overall debt accumulating over time. And I think one of the best measurements of this for economists, whether conservative or liberal, to some degree, it's the number, the percentage of debt is important in percentage of what the national gross domestic product is. So in the old days, when you wanted to buy a house, old days, when I was buying a house, mortgage companies would look at your gross income, and then they'd say you'd have to be about 20%, 25% housing cost. It's sort of similar that way, because of mortgage, you're not looking at it, you know, just as that year, you're looking at the debt spread over the course of the mortgage and sometimes refinance. So, but this is, many of my Republican colleagues, I think, are correct in being concerned about this. It should be monitored, and it would be nice to get it down. There are ways to do that, that I would do differently from some of my colleagues in the majority. So this part is, this is the President's budget, as it says. These are from his, from the administration. I generally agree with it. He obviously is more aggressive at spending, and with the hope that it will help stimulate the economy, and that will help with both our deficit and our debt. Speaker Ryan, who's an expert on the budget, from his years as being chair of the budget, has a different approach to doing the budget, dramatic different approach. But it's more, it's, the more conservative approach would be, cut the debt, cut the deficit, and don't do things that I would argue, as a more Keynesian outlook on life, that some of those things stimulate the economy. But those are good legitimate, I think, political arguments. So I'm not going to go through all this, because you'll all be asleep, but if you aren't already. But these, in particular, I think, are things that we just added that are more specific, and again, we'll make these available to any of you, and you can get them on the website. Now, this will be part of the negotiation. Obviously, the majority party in both Houses do not accept the President's budget, and it's very controversial right now, because they've said that they're not going to go through the traditional process, where it goes through the Budget Committee hearings, and there's give and take back and forth. Again, these are more of the things he's done. These are things, supporting families, things that I really agree with. Because of the rise of poverty and inequality, there are things that we know we can do that, pretty reliably, like the earned income tax credit is actually, it was a Republican legislation when it first started, and is widely supported by both parties, and Speaker Ryan has indicated in his budgets that that's something he would invest in more, because the idea is, you're giving, you're giving a tax credit to people who are working but are very poor, and there's a lot of people in this country. So the idea is it's rewarding people for being out there and working. And most of the research says it does make a big difference. California, 30 states had a state earned income tax credit, so there's a federal one, and then there's 30 states can do one in addition. California just started this year doing an earned income tax credit. When I was in the legislature, I was the author of a bill that unfortunately didn't get signed, but somebody else got credit for my good work, I guess. This I mentioned about transportation, it's a real problem. You're going to, you read about it today, you're going to continue to read about it. Governor Brown, at the state level, actually had a special session, and you need a supermajority in both Houses and the legislature to raise taxes. And I know, I had a couple of conversations with Bob Huff, who's the Republican leader when I was there, and is a good friend, and just, he sent me a text and asked me what I thought we could get accomplished, and it was interesting going back and forth and talking about it. But it's a problem on multiple levels. So, again, I'm going to zip through these. I don't know whether my staff is testing me or not, but... So those, all those budget things, again, this is what we'll be talking about when we go back in the next, in the next few weeks and the coming months, is trying to reconcile the President's budget with Congress's budget, and there will be give and take, as there should be. But there was a lot done. When Mr. Boehner left, he made a promise, he said he was going to clean the barn, was his quote-unquote. Within the Republican caucus, we have divert, different groups within the Democratic caucus, as you can imagine, but in the Republican caucus, there are 40 members of what's called the Freedom Caucus. I am the only Democrat on my hall, if you come to visit me. I have to, I'm surrounded by Republicans, and they like to tease me all the time about that liberal from the Bay Area we're going to get. And I tell them frequently, because you have to walk over to the Capitol to vote, I said, "Guys, you're going to have to walk with me once in a while." So many of them, Dave Brat, who's very well-known from Virginia, is across the hall from me, very, very conservative guy, but we've developed a really nice relationship and, but that within the mechanics of their caucus is, they've got to get, those 40 people can decide what the caucus does in many ways. So that's one of the reasons, if you follow this, Mr. Boehner left, because he just thought that he was of a different generation and he approached things differently. So Speaker Ryan is very conservative, but he's going to have to deal with a desperate, disparate group of people, I think, who, people who've been there a long time on both sides of states. The ability to compromise is, we're in a period of challenge in the Congress. How's that for an artful expression? So these are some of the good things, I think, that happened with Mr. Boehner. The idea that we were going to shut down the government was widely considered to be sort of crazy. Moody's downgraded the federal government's credit because of it, and it caused concern economically around the world. So I thought Speaker Boehner did a real service, but now we have to, that was a two-year budget, so that solved some of our problems, to let Speaker Ryan get in there and get used to things, but it still can be undone. So there's a lot of members on the Republican side, more, that think that it should be undone and there should be deeper cuts. And these are the things that we did get done last year. So actually, last year, there was periods where the Christian Science Monitor did an editorial that said, "Finally, Congress is working again," and then something stupid happened, and it went right back. But the first part is what I said about Speaker Boehner before he left, so that was generally considered a positive thing. The taxes extenders, that was a compromise, so there was a compromise on things that the Republicans wanted to continue, and we did not. Transportation reauthorization, now, the good news was, states and local government know that there will be a certain amount of money from the federal government for the next five years, so these get reauthorized, hopefully, every two years, most of these things. It was almost two decades since they last reauthorized, so it caused a lot of uncertainty at the state and local level, because they weren't as assured as they are now that they would actually get the funding. So that was a success, but it still has this permanent funding, finding a permanent funding source to deal with the shortfall in the gas tax at a federal level, we still have to do that. Education reauthorization, I mentioned. International relations, one of the reasons why we had 10-town halls last year was, we were going to have a lot, but we probably had an additional three, because they were just on the Iran deal, and there was a lot of interest, if any of you came to any of those, and a lot of difference of opinion. So far, the Iranians are agreeing with the agreement, they're getting rid of their nuclear capacity to build a bomb, so we'll keep our fingers crossed and hope that continues. Obviously, a lot of concern, because there's not a lot of trust built amongst us and the Iranians. Let's see, Export-Import Bank was a very large, big partisan argument, but it actually got reauthorized. And then medical reimbursement sounds pretty boring, but reimbursements under the Affordable Care Act, but just in general, to get more people healthcare, as it's become more expensive, again, this is both a state and federal issue, is making sure that providers can actually get enough money where they will take, in California, Medi-Cal patients, so you can take Medicare or Medicaid patients. And the Keystone Pipeline was rejected by the US State Department, but there were a lot of things within that, probably the biggest thing, the investors in the Keystone Pipeline, I would think, that would be grateful that it fell apart because of what's happened in the energy market in the world right now. If they'd built it, there would be less demand. This is happening on fracking around the country in North Dakota, where, I just, I used my Boston accent on Dakota. In those states where fracking was really a big boom, now because of the cost of gasoline's come down, they've had this bust, so Keystone probably wasn't as good an idea. If everybody had known what was going to happen with the energy market, they probably wouldn't have put much money into it. These are the things we were able to get done. I'm told that for freshmen, we were, and I'm very lucky, because I've got a great staff, we had four amendments in the education reauthorization that were bills that became part of it. That third one was purloined, plagiarized from my predecessor. It's a big deal, if you've seen the movie Concussion, and the NFL's talking about it. That bill that Congressman Miller had done, but wasn't able to get passed, at least required local school districts to have an advisory group to look at the impacts of concussions on kids' health in different sports, as the resource becomes more advanced. So family engagement centers are something important to me. In my youth, I was a probation officer for, in Boston. We know from years of research, again, that for disadvantaged kids, and for kids from wealthy communities or any kind of a community, behavioral health's really important. We cut counselors in school. Now we know so much more about cognitive development, we need to have, and so, this actually came out of Harlem, Family Community Learning Engagement Centers, and there were wonderful programs in the schools, in the communities, so parents and kids can access behavioral health, substance abuse, if that's a problem. And again, the outcomes on this are, it's a really good investment. So that amendment was with a Republican, Glenn Thompson, from Pennsylvania, who I partnered with, and it's a $100 million grant. So, I mean, I could never get that done in the legislature, but for the whole country, it's not a whole lot, but I'm pretty pleased with that. That was the last bullet, actually, 21st Century Community Learning Centers. The John Muir National Historic Site, again, was a Congressman Miller bill. We got it passed out of the House, but we're going to have to wait for this year to get it passed out of the Senate. The John Muir Trust in Martinez, wonderful nonprofit, raises money, sort of similar to Mount Diablo, but more on the raising money part, and buys property over there in the Breones Ridge. In this instance, they bought property, if you're heading westbound on Highway 4, you see the John Muir National Park on your right. It's property actually to the south, to the left, and it takes an act of Congress, I know this sounds crazy, but it takes an act of Congress to get something for free. So we're going to, we're having that donated to the national park. And this was just something interesting, came to me. I had a young man, when I was in the legislature, he had lived in my old Senate district in Richmond, worked three jobs, was a former football player, he fell asleep, ran into a guardrail in Marin. What we found out, because of Expose and the New York Times, was this particular company changed the design of it, so when you, and California has lots of them, so we're, everybody's doing a lot to try to fix the problem, but when you hit, we've all seen these, there's like a bumper when you come off. When you hit them, there's a spring in there that's supposed to get you to deflect, so the car doesn't basically become impaled. When they changed the design, there's a lot of evidence to show that they didn't change it with, and there was just a, I think it was $300 million judgment in New Mexico, oh, maybe it was Texas, against the company that built these, on defrauding the government, because they changed the design. And this young man was killed, because he fell asleep and he hit it in such a way that it killed him. So what we got passed in the amendment was, there's a study that has to be done, so in the future, we'll make sure that these things don't happen again, that the Department of Defense or Department of Transportation will pick it up. There were 30 states, when I was in the legislature, that had these and stopped using them, and California was one of the last ones, partially because of the legislation I did, but then we got it passed in the federal government. And this one's important for the district. This was a real surprise. When I presented it on the floor, the Republicans had said they weren't going to support it. What it does is, and it's important for Contra Costa, because all this crude that comes to the refineries, most of it comes by pipeline. You probably don't want to know how much fuel goes by pipeline around here. Some of it through the Iron Horse Corridor, jet fuel to SFO in Oakland. It's very safe, famous last words. But now, because of all this new crude, there's more of it prospectively being brought in by rail. What our amendment says is, the national laboratories have to actually do a study, bring it back to Congress on the volatility of the fuel, what's safe and what isn't, because right now, the tankers that take this aren't double-hulled tankers, and there's been some derailments and really horrible explosions. So it's funny, when I took it to the floor, it'd been done by other colleagues of much higher seniority. I presented the bill fully, expecting the chairman, Chairman Upton, from the Energy Committee, to say, "I'm against the committee," and it was surreal. He said, "Oh, this is a good amendment." And I'm like, going to go out and buy a lottery ticket, so. That is an example, I mean, that's one of the nice examples of nonpartisanship, in that people can actually change their mind, even as late as when you're on the floor. So this year, we're looking to follow up on the things we've done before. As a general rule, I find that for my personality and my mind, and for most people to be effective, you have to focus. There's so many things you could run around trying to do, so you try to focus on the areas where you have expertise, but on the budget, on the committees you're on, and then obviously, you want to do things that your constituents want you to do. In the 26 years I've represented areas of this county, historically, the two biggest things in poll after poll for Contra Costas has been education and transportation. Housing has now popped up, housing's usually around the top. Public safety, every once in a while, will pop up. Oh, there's one thing on this last one. This is a huge issue right now, prescription drug abuse. You hear it in the presidential races, it's both meth, amphetamine, prescription drugs, opiates, and heroin. It's really shocking what's happening. You heard it in New Hampshire. I get involved... I got involved with this because a man in Danville, Bob Pack, if any of you have read about him once in a while, he, 10, 15 years ago, he and his wife, a software engineer, were Sunday afternoon, at 3:00 in the afternoon, walking out on Tassara Valley Road to go to take their kids to Baskin Robbins, across from the main gate there at Blackhawk. A woman who had been drinking, but also had been using opiates, went across the road, hit both of his kids, and the kids died, his wife almost died. So, in California, we got a great bill passed that is now up and running, where it's a prescription monitoring drug system, which every state but Missouri has, but now, the one in California is real-time electronic information, and we're keeping our fingers crossed, it'll work, so the Department of Justice can monitor to see if doctors are giving out too many of these, or if patients are shopping to get them, which is a real problem. And then, it helps, obviously, you've got to get the right prescription. So, it's a huge thing, and we spend a lot of time on it. The U.S. represents 5% of the world population, but we consume over 80% of the opiates in the world. So, it's also a huge criminal justice thing because organized crime has got very involved in it. So, I'm going to stop there, I'm sorry if I talk fast, but I knew when I looked at the 37 pages, this was going to be a challenge. So, our two area offices, the one in Ignacio Valley Road, and then the one in Richmond, the city of Richmond was nice enough to give us very cheap rent on offices in Richmond, and then our offices in the Cannon Office Building in DC. So, if you ever come, you're more than welcome, and we're happy to facilitate tours as well. Somebody, when I came in, just told me that they had a wonderful tour and got to watch the Senate. I was going to make a wisecrack if they stayed awake through the whole thing, but they were happy. Okay?
All right, great, well, thanks Congressman for the presentation, just wanted to take a quick moment and acknowledge Jill Ray with Supervisor Candace Anderson in the back, hi Jill.
Jill Ray, you've worked for the county forever!
And then, also, Barb Johnson, where's Barb? Barb Johnson is Congressman George Miller's former district director, so thank you Barb for being here. So, we have a ton of-
Just one second, Barb, you're not going to tell George about this, are you? Yeah, you are, yeah, right. That guy doesn't know what he's doing.
So, we have a ton of really good substantive questions, we want to try to get through as many as possible today, including one right over here. And, if we don't get to your question today, we will follow up and send you a written response from our office, we'll do that, you know, within a week, so you'll get your question answered. And if you do choose to read your question, I respectfully ask you be as concise and short and brief as possible, so we can get through as many questions as possible. So, the first question is from, and these questions were taken first come, first served, they're all numbered one through to the last one. So, the first question is from Philip, and Philip would like to read his question, Philip Drum, right, is that, okay?
So, again, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Looking at life, a recent article came out of JAMA, which looks at the major causes of injury, death, and life expectancy between the United States citizens and 12 other countries. And, we are 2.2 years behind those other countries as a result of three major issues, and I see that you've addressed one of them, which is gun violence. The other two being on the Transportation Committee, I would hope you would address, and those being motor vehicle accidents, and then also drugs. And so, my point is, when are we going to address and adopt the National Transportation Highway Safety Authority's recommendation to lower the blood alcohol limit from 0.08 to 0.05? And also, as a result, so, and that's been flat for now 15 years, the number of deaths, and if we would reduce that, we would save two California lives a week. I would also point out, though, that we also have a major problem with marijuana in the United States, and it may be coming to this state soon. And we had over 1,500 deaths in California in the past five years due to marijuana and driving. And so, I would also then recommend a zero-tolerance marijuana THC level and driving in addition to lowering the blood alcohol.
Okay, those are all really good things. On the blood alcohol, I would, I just started reading the paper about dropping it from 8% to 5%, as somebody who used to own a liquor license. I think we did a really good job. When I started, we changed laws in California, which I agreed with, where individual licensees were held accountable for over-serving people and individual employees, and it had a sharp decrease in people being over-served because when you didn't have responsibility, and it was a cultural thing then, people just thought people should drink whatever they wanted. So, that helped, I think, one of the things that, a bill that I authored with Mike Fuhr, who's now the LA City Attorney, has been a pilot project in about five counties, the breathalyzer's built into a car, so if you've got a DUI, the court can say-
They have little kids blowing into it.
That was the problem, but, or the person next to you could, but they're working on it, and they might get to a point where they can, the system in the breathalyzer will actually get sophisticated enough to lower night, cost, but those things, I think, you have to look at. One of the things we've been very active in, and we have a bill, we just have, we've struggled with it, there's a wonderful sad book called Deadly Wandering, it's by a New York Times reporter who lives in San Francisco, about a very sad case in Utah where this young man was texting, texting's a big problem, and getting on the phone, if you do a ride-along with a CHP, it's amazing talking to them about the dangers of texting. I mean, you can see people, I mean, you see people at lights who were just stopped and they're texting. So, our bill, the idea was, and we met with a guy at UCSF who does a lot of research on distracted driving, there is technology now that you could put in for about $50 into your car, like a parent could do this, that would prohibit the, any kind of technical advice from going out or coming in. When we worked with the Federal Communications Commission, the problem is that the science isn't good enough, so that there could be a car next to it that would also be blocked, it could be emergency vehicle. So, there is a good deal amount of money going in, and the AT&amp;T and Verizon have actually been very supportive of it. So, all those things you suggested, I think, are good things, and we should do more.
Great, thank you very much. The next question is from George Black. George, and I see you wrote a page-long comment slash questionnaire, so if you can just maybe-
Well, I got it down to 300 words and-
Okay. Let me come over and get you the mic, so everyone can hear you.
All right. Hey, political advertising on the people's airwaves is an obscenity, why is it not banned by the FCC? This is not a crackpot scheme from a Yahoo, I'm holding advanced FCC license, a degree in social science, and years of direct and experience in the direct mail industry. Here are the facts, the people's airwaves are licensed to broadcast, are licensed broadcasters by government, licensees obviously have terms and conditions. The fairness doctrine demonstrates that clearly that the FCC can regulate broadcast speech. More recently, everybody remembers that Janet Jackson's wardrobe malfunction, but less it was made, less was made of the big fine she paid. Broadcast speech is not free speech and never has been. It does not require congressional action to eliminate the 90% of campaign spending that goes to broadcast media, just ban all of it. The FCC commissioners can do it with a four commission votes, and the president might be able to do it with a stroke of a pen. A 90% solution is huge, let donor class spend their Citizens United money on newspapers and the U.S. Postal Service. I imagine that the first objection would be that the result- I'll skip that part, give you the clincher here, okay? I've noted that people conclude that this solution is not workable because the Federal Election Commission has always ruled in favor of freedom of speech. Yet, the Federal Communications Commission has never ruled in favor of free speech. The FEC can rule on how money is spent, but the FCC can rule on what media can be purchased. There is no overlap. One more paragraph. Let me summarize the whole thing with a metaphor-
You're losing, I'm an expert on when you're losing a crowd.
General Motors can spend its advertising billions any way it chooses, but it cannot put up billboards in Yellowstone Park. The park, like the airwaves, belongs to the people of the United States.
So, I'd be happy to talk to you more about that, I'm in general agreement that the, one of the biggest challenges we have in this country is the amount of money involved in politics and the lack of really robust transparency. And, just about finished with this wonderful book, I think, by a woman named Jane Mayer, called Dark Money. I always like to read a lot, but now that I'm flying across the country every week, I'm really reading a lot. And, I mean, she directs it at the Kochs and more conservatives, Americans for Prosperity and that group, there are similar people who have a lot of money invested, interest all over the ideological spectrum, I would argue there's much more on the right. And if you read the book, it's, if it's as accurate as she writes it, and you'll hear more about this book, it's, last week it was numbers two on the New York Times Bestseller List for nonfiction. So, this is a long way of saying, whatever we can do to get citizens closer to electeds without all of this money in between and advertising is better for the country. Right now, there's this, one of the big problems with our electoral process is not just the money, but you have this whole industry of people making money off the money, they're consultants, I wanted to do a bill that made every political consultant be licensed in California. Oh, my staff said, "They'll kill you, you'll never get it anywhere, all your colleagues will be mad at you." All of the pollsters, the, and I, you know, I have them-
If you do it this way-
But, I was going to finish, the, it's also the TV stations, because they obviously benefit from having all this money into the system, so-
If you ban the TV advertising and you announce it to the newspapers, the newspapers will elect you to the Senate.
Right. And, if you could stop, because if we do back and forth, this won't work, but, I was going to kiddingly say, "What's a newspaper?" But, I think, with all seriousness, it brings up a really good point that I need to know more about and happy to meet with you, but the general idea is a good one, that we have to get the voters, the closer the voters are to the people who they vote for without things in between them, the better off the country would be. And more people would vote because they would realize you wouldn't have all this manipulation going in between.
Great, thank you.
Every question and answer isn't like that one, or we won't go very-
So, moving right along from Peter Kahn. Peter, I like you, your question's two sentences. Here you are.
I'm going to embellish. Yeah, like you, I also attended and even graduated from a Jesuit high school, they may not be proud of that.
I am.
I want to speak about, about the development of the disabled community, and not just in California. I have a 25-year-old autistic son, and I served on the Area 5 Board locally here. The development of the disabled community has had their resources diminish continually over at least the last 12 years, and it's just getting harder and harder. And it's not just the 300,000 that are documented in California, but it's their families and it's their providers that I'm speaking for, and I'd like to know your thoughts and what you think we can do.
Okay. I spent a lot of time in this in local government. My introduction to it was, and at the state level, and most DD community who spent a lot of time in Sacramento would acknowledge that I, I would say I was their biggest advocate. And it was during a period of time when I chaired the Health and Human Service Subcommittee of the Budget, and when we, Governor Brown came in and suggested a $1.2 billion project to the, a cut to the, to the DD community, and we got it back to, back to a little under a billion, but you're under attack again. And I know, just talking to some of your, some of the folks at the Regional Center and advocates, that they're hoping to get this health tax passed, which a good component of it, would go back to the DD community. I think whatever we can do, one of the things I've done is do a listening tour of all the school districts, and a similar problem in the growth of autism in the school districts, and they don't have enough funds to serve the special needs kids. So, we need to spend more money on the DD community and special needs students, and it's a good investment. One of the things most people don't know, that in California, there's the Lanterman Act, named after a very conservative Republican Assembly member. When Pat Brown was governor, the LA Times did an expose, because if you were developmentally disabled in those days, you were institutionalized. So, the LA Times had the story about all of the abuse happening. So, Pat Brown called Mr. Lanterman in, because he chaired one of the committees that I did, but in the Assembly, and said, "We've got to have funding to build more of these institutions," and Lanterman shook his head and said, "No, we should provide funding to get these folks so that they can get out in the community, they created the regional centers." So, it's been, generally been a national and international successful model, but we keep eroding at the resources, right, when there's more and more. So, both at a federal and a state level, we've got to keep those resources going. At my request, when I was there, the development centers, like the one in Sonoma that's got big liability problems and is a beautiful piece of property, the Brown administration is now going through the process of selling those, we wanted them to put the money back into the DD community, and then keep two of them, because there are people who do need that level of care, one in Northern California and one in Southern California. So, I completely agree with you. The reason I got involved, actually, was because of George Miller, because his father, when he was a state senator in this area, was an advocate for DD community, and there is a George Miller Center in Concord and one in Richmond, because State Senator George Miller said the county can do a better job at this than the state can. So, we built those as respite care for parents, and then we were going to cut them because we didn't have the money when I was at county, so myself and a colleague insisted that we not cut it. But, I only bring that up because that's how I got to know the DD community and really have a great deal of respect and affection for them. So, we have to provide more funding. I'm cautiously optimistic at the state level that they'll provide more funding. At the federal level, my roommate in Congress, we live together a couple blocks, is Jared Huffman from Marin, and on the autism side, he and I have a bill that would basically create an insurance pool for school districts, so that would create a lump-sum fund, so school districts could basically try to buy insurance over the long haul, so that they could be reimbursed, and the federal government would contribute the biggest contribution so that they could be reimbursed when their population spiked and gave the services that they're supposed to. When the U.S. Congress passed the DD Act, I'm spacing on the name, Barbara probably remembers, but the federal government investment to local school districts was supposed to be 40%, it's 18%. I had a school superintendent from Brentwood say, "All new money that the school districts are getting because the economy doing so much better, they could just put into special needs," and they still couldn't get caught up. So, I, that is a long way of explaining, we've got to put a lot more money into the system and make it work for everybody.
Thank you very much. Very quickly.
Yeah, why is it just autism? Why couldn't it be other mental health issues as well?
No, it is. It is, it is. I just said autism, because when you go to the school districts, that's what's growing exponentially right now, and we haven't been able to find out what the cause is.
So, this next question kind of pigies back off your comment right there, and this is from a constituent that would like to remain anonymous. Congressman, I am very concerned that we do not have a mental health crisis team like the city of Berkeley does. What are your ideas to help solve the epidemic of mental illness in our country?
So, we have to spend more money in behavioral health, there is a bill by a Republican colleague to reauthorize the Mental Health Act and to provide more of it, I think there's a growing consensus that we have to spend more money on both substance abuse and mental health, behavioral health, in every way that we can. And the research is just growing exponentially.
Okay. The next question, we're switching gears to international affairs, and this is also from a constituent who'd like to remain anonymous. Congressman, we support stricter rules and operations to help protect us from Muslim terrorists, how? So, how would you enforce stricter rules or support stricter rules to fight terrorism?
Just finish that last question, so there was a specific question about emergency mental health, behavioral health, we need to have that back in this county. We just did a roundtable in Richmond about all their things that they're doing over there to get illegal guns off the street, and one of the things that was brought up was that we don't have an emergency mental health team. So, for instance, there's a shooting at the Pullman School. One of the staff there was saying, "Just having somebody, having professionals come out and talk to those elementary school kids after they saw one of their classmates get shot is really important," and all, again, the research shows that. When it comes to terrorism, I think, I think that country has done actually a pretty good job. I mean, from a statistical standpoint, we have not eliminated it, and I don't know if you can do that. On the specificity as to which ethnicity, which country of origin, which religion, I just, I think you have to be really careful about that. I think a lot of people have said, some of the things that Mr. Trump has said have actually made the people who want to do us harm, it's done them more good, because it inflames this, this sort of attitude that, us against them mentality. On the other hand, you have to be smart, you have to be analytical about where the risks are coming from. Law enforcement has tools now that are becoming more and more successful, as is Homeland Security and the FBI about doing- and the FBI about doing sophisticated risk assessments so that at least statistically you show that the investment you're making is drawing down the possibility you'll see terrorist events. Personally, I think we have to do all that we can, but I also think that Americans have to be Americans. We have to protect the liberties we have. There's a big issue right now about Apple versus the FBI and technology. So if we, this is my belief, if if we are not respectful to the ideals that are in the Constitution, then you don't have a democracy anyways. In a certain way, the terrorists have won. So I agree with the sentiment that we have to do all that we can to make us safe. We've had a number of hearings in the Oversight Committee, particularly on TSA. They haven't been terribly flattering to the Transportation Safety Administration. I and both Republicans and Democrats have made a number of suggestions and we have to make those, all of these security agencies be as efficient as possible so that statistically at least, we're constantly working to make Americans as safe as possible with a very strong caveat, in my opinion, that while making people safe, you can't surrender to fear that's, I think, out of proportion to the potential for your risk. You know, I have a postcard on my back of my desk that my brother gave to me years ago and it's that emblem that became important during the blitz, be calm and carry on. I think that's probably a good admonition for all Americans right now that we should be mindful, but we should follow the British during that period of time, that if we focus on being good Americans, doing the best we can and making our government do the smart things and be efficient about security apparatus, but not overreact to the threat either.
Okay. Thank you for the answer. I like that. Switching over to infrastructure and transportation projects. This question's from Paul from Clayton. Paul asked, how would your legislation to improve accountability and oversight control costs or outright kill the California High Speed Rail Train to Nowhere Project that is greatly altered from what the voters approved?
I did a couple of bills in the legislature that I got the governor to sign. A few we disagreed with and didn't sign because Governor Brown's supporter of High Speed Rail is current currently envisioned. I'm a supporter of High Speed Rail, but not the way we're doing it. And I have some expertise at this. I've been able to see systems around the world and have their come and talk to them and also spend a lot of team with the High Speed Rail Authority. So if if I were governor, and I have no desire to be governor and I'm about, I have at least $5 million light on campaign campaign funds, I would start over again. So what California needs, when you look at the projections for growth in the next 30 to 50 years, we need a world-class passenger rail system because of our population growth and to give people choices because we can't build a highway infrastructure necessary to get us out of the congestion we're in. So you have to give them a transportation system. The Japanese have the best system in the world. You have to have inner-city transportation. You have to have commuter rail like BART. Then you have to have traditionally intracity rail like we have in this country, all not terribly good. And then you upgrade that to High Speed Rail. If you go to Japan, four companies are publicly traded who run the JR system, which includes High Speed Rail. It's an amazing system, different culture, different tax and different density. But we could model that over the next 35 years and build a High Speed Rail system, but it would have all the component parts. The way you get the money for High Speed Rail is on modeling. You have to have enough volume to pay for the capital cost and the operation. We're not doing that in California where it's on a wish that it will, the modeling will become strong enough. And that's where I think we're making a huge mistake. And plus, we have, we have to convince the public, you, the taxpayers, to invest in a new a new revenue source. And when you poll and you put High Speed Rail in there right now, it kills the possibilities of getting the voters to vote for tax for other other issues. Today, they announced that they were going to change some of it. So it'd be interesting, but I personally, I think High Speed Rail would be a good thing, but not done the way we're doing it. We can't afford it, for one thing.
Moving on, the next question's from Alan Smith. Alan has a question about interest rates. In December, the Federal Reserve said inflation was 2%. Social Security Administration said it was 0%. So so who's right? How can they both be right? And and Alan, if you have a specific question about Social Security Office, we speak with them every single day. So feel free to reach out to me afterwards.
Yeah. Alan's one of the great heroes of the library system in Contra Costa County. The building across the street might not be there if it wasn't for Alan Smith. He helped get the bond passed that Senator Rainey, I think, was the author of years ago. So thank you for that. Social Security is a challenge. As somebody who's starting to look, getting old enough that I'm, I look more closely when I get my statement from the Social Security Administration and the cost of living. So for people on fixed incomes, I think we have to be really careful about supporting them and making sure that the COLAs are part of it. So we, I would like to know more about the disparity. One of the arguments was from the Fed, I can't remember which one, was when you looked at the total formula for cost of living, gas prices had gone down so much. But one of the arguments against that, applying it to Social Security and why the formula's wrong is many people don't drive who are taking Social Security. So having cheaper gas prices doesn't necessarily help them when they're over their their costs.
Next, we have a two-part question from Ralph Hoffman.
Ralph Hoffman, another icon.
So Ralph, your first question is a question about accessing our website and you had some technical difficulties. Okay, we can talk afterwards. I'm happy to help you with that. So the second part from Ralph is, I'm a member of the Contra Costa chapter of the Citizens Climate Lobby. Are you in favor of a federal carbon fee and dividend tax as a step to address climate change?
I've been involved in carbon for a long time when I was appointed to the Air Resources Board. We were just starting to look at it before more and more of the research came out indicating the the peril we have in front of us if we don't do something about it. When we were doing cap and trade in California, which is now working successfully, I argued that it would be better to have a carbon fee because it was more direct. Ironically, the petroleum industry didn't want that and lobbied against it. When they got cap and trade, they came back and said, we'd rather have a carbon fee. And I told them, it's too late. You waited. So I think at a federal level, there's some, there's a carbon fee is the simplest, most efficient way to administer the cost and the mitigation for the for those people who create carbon and make them more efficient. Cap and trades worked in California. Didn't work when it was first introduced in Europe, but they've gotten done a better job. Having said that, it would be simpler and easier if it was just a fee.
Okay. So the next question's a little, a little political question from Howard Goldsmith. Howard would like to know, why hasn't the Democratic Party stood with President Obama on the main issues of the past seven years?
Why hasn't or has?
Why they haven't? Have not?
Oh, I guess I'd argue that. I'm, we have had differences of opinion. I know I voted against TPA, which is the Fast Track Authority and has a history in this country to give the president the ability to do international negotiations. When it was first done, I think during the Eisenhower Nixon administration, trade was much different than it is today. And the TPP, which we'll probably hear after the election, I'm just starting to read again. I read it, what I had of it when we were considering TPA, the Fast Track, and now TPP is the actual trade negotiation between in the Pacific Rim. My my concern about that is I don't think American workers can take one more hit to their pocketbook if you can avoid it. I mean, there's some things you have no control over. The tech industry thinks for for their needs, it's important to help them that. If people could convince me, and I've told the administration this, that for the average American, it would actually help them, then I might consider voting for it. But nothing I've seen or read. I just had a meeting with a small group of us with Nobel winner Joseph Stiglitz, and he's done a lot of research. And again, there are other economists who disagree with him. I agree with Dr. Stiglitz is the demonstrate so far, his belief and the research against these trade agreements is that it puts the American worker at greater peril. And certainly, if you look at NAFTA, if you just look at the auto industry, because in relation to NAFTA, an average auto worker in the United States makes about $30 an hour now, wages and benefits. A German, on the other hand, makes about $70. And then people in South America, mostly in Mexico, who are building the same cars down there, make $7 an hour. So the benefit from NAFTA was supposed to be for all the workers and the owners. And most of the research shows that it didn't go to the workers or the middle-class people and it took away from workers in this country. The president says in favor of it that, my time's up, that labor is no longer mobile or and capital is in the in the world because of the global economy. I just think we have to be very careful to the American middle class. I, you know, you got to have, people have to have wages for this economy to work. When you have an economy that's based on 70% consumer goods, if you don't have a middle class that has disposable income, the economy's never going to get up to growing beyond what it is growing now. So those are the places I've disagreed with them on. I think I've agreed with them on most everything else and I think most of the Democratic Party has. And I think that's good. I don't, I don't think we should all agree on everything in either party. It'd be nice if we compromised more, but there's nothing wrong with disagreements. Huh?
You don't hear, in other words, Nancy Pelosi doesn't say enough. She agrees with, and we haven't heard. You don't expect it to get from the other side. Most of them are those people. You're not going to get it.
Yeah.
She has to say something. And the chairmen of committees have to say something once in a while.
Yeah. I would argue that we do. But read this, read that book, Dark Money, about how much there's been, and I don't think we as Democrats have been, we've been naive about what we've been fighting against. So if you believe the author of this book, for the 2016 election cycle, the Republican National Committee will have a budget of $1.6 trillion nationally. The Democratic National Committee will have the same. And then Americans for Prosperity and their affiliated groups, the Koch Brothers and all these very wealthy people, have $900 billion. So you basically have a third party that's deliberately been in the shadows directing this. So when you're trying to articulate yourself, one of our problems is we listen to what the other side says and we're trying to respond rationally. And a lot of, a lot of their arguments aren't directed at us or the general public. Some of it's to the general public to mislead you, in my opinion, but a lot of it's to those people who donate to their campaigns and donate to these independent expenditures. But I think the American public is, you you look at the Sanders campaign and a certain degree, Mr. Trump's campaign, there's a resonance that people know that the system is rigged and they've had enough. So I'm hopeful that more books like this and more transparency, there's going to be a giant pushback. And then lastly, on what just happened with Justice Scalia, that's a really important, I mean, that changes if the Citizens United with the amount of money that has been spent and independent expenditures from both ideological spectrums outside of normal transparency, that's just not good for the country, in my opinion.
Thank you for that. The next question is, is Ann, Ann Raymond? Ann, do you want me to read it or do you want? Okay. So this is an immigration question. Congressman, do you know what the Obama administration's plans are for sending Syrian refugees to Contra Costa County? Does the assignment of refugees come with financial support from the federal government?
So the US is a signatory, along with many countries, on how we deal with asylum problems and refugees. So we have to adhere to that. There was a rumor that we were getting in the office that 10,000 Syrian refugees or something like that. How much was it? How many were were coming to Walnut Creek? There's only 10,000 collectively for the whole country in a country with 320 million people. So there may be statistically, one or two that get here. But having said that, one of the things that was crazy about that vote, in my view, was the refugee process is like 17 months between when you apply as as an applicant under these signed treaties that all countries have agreed to take a certain population if they meet the criteria that they're being, they're risk, if they stay where they are, they're going to have a high risk of dying. So it's, those are good things. We want to help people, but we also want to stabilize the area they're in so they're safer. The bigger risk after San Bernardino was from people on the visa program who were were citizens of countries in Europe who could come right now. So the people, the people who were involved in the in the incident in Paris, I think seven of eight of them could have come to the United States anytime they wanted because they were citizens of France and I think Belgium. So we got all across on this and some of it was Mr. Trump saying, you should just stop all Syrians. Well, I mean, that denies a knowledge of how the system works anyways and what authority he would have or Congress. So I think we just have to spend a little more time understanding what we have agreed to in international law. You can disagree with it, but we are, we're supposed to be a country of the rule of law. And if you don't agree with it, you try to change it through democratic process. So the Syrian refugee thing, I think, is a, is not the issue that was portrayed to be, that there's a process, that people go through it, that the probability of you being killed or hurt by a Syrian refugee statistically, there's only 10,000 of them are going to be admitted to the United States as of right now. There's only about 2,000, I think, processed. And then it also, his whole idea affected Iraqi citizens who worked with us during the war, translators and people like that, who would have been set back numbers of years if if what the Republicans had suggested happened, which, and then they're at risk of being killed because of what's happening in that country because they helped us, which I don't think is right either.
Okay. Thank you. Moving right along to Richard from Walnut Creek. Richard's got a three-parter, but the first part was High Speed Rail, which I think you you covered pretty well. So we're going to move on to number two. Can can we tie congressional pay to clear an honest progress towards a balanced federal budget? And then just real quick, the last part is, can the worthy goal of immigration reform be achieved without building a wall at the border with Mexico?
Um, you know, on congressional pay, there, I never thought there was an incentive between what we get paid as legislators and getting our job done, but I usually disagree with that on performance reviews. In the legislature, remember, we used to be late with the budget all the time? Well, then we all passed an initiative that said if you didn't pass a budget on time, you've, the legislature forfeited its pay. As one of the, one of the, one of Pavlov's dogs in the legislature, along with 119 other people, it was remarkable how we didn't have a budget late anymore. Now, to be fair to us, another provision of that same initiative said that we could pass a budget with a simple majority. And prior to that, the minority party leveraged things that had nothing to do with the budget. So that was also important. You know, compensation, one of the problems that's happening in all levels of government is that only wealthy people can afford to run. When you look at the number of millionaires from both parties who are members of Congress, it's, it's expensive. I mean, I'm not, but regular people can still afford to go. And you say, well, you make $174,000 a year. That's pretty good. And I wouldn't deny that, except that you have to have two places to live and you travel back and forth across the country, which is all part of your budget. So what we should do is make sure that the budget is, and all of our budget and our expenditures are properly, efficiently have oversight, as I said, and that we should do it in such a way that you you keep the debt and the deficit within acceptable realms based on research by economists of all stripes.
And then immigration reform, is that attainable in Congress this year and building a wall on the border?
Immigration reform, unfortunately, I don't think is attainable in a presidential election year, given the volatility around it. Senator Rubio's struggling with this was because he was co-author of a bill that John McCain was co-author of as well. Senator Schumer, Democrat, leading Democrat, was co-author of it, that passed in the Senate with bipartisan votes the last Congress and then never was brought up in the House of Representatives because the members didn't want to have to be on record voting for it. So it, what it did was it provided a pathway to citizenship for people with 11 to 12 million people who are here right now and are undocumented. So I supported it. I think we have to have, realistically, you cannot go out and collect 11 million people, send them back to their country of origin and not be surprised that many of them find their way back in here. So there's a way to fix it, I think. The other way is to make sure that other countries live in peace and prosperity and are doing, have, don't have as much corruption as they have and people can live where they want to live, which most people, in spite of the allure of the United States, if you took away the economic issues, most people would stay where they raised their family and are used to the culture. So we're.
Is my question right? It seems to be a quid pro quo that we have to build a wall. Build the wall and then all of these things come together. Could you just address that?
Well, I think we need to do what's to the infrastructure that effectuates an effective immigration policy so that people who want to come here, that we would like to have here, get here. If if the experts say it requires a wall, I'm okay with a wall. I would prefer not to have a wall.
You seem to say you're partisan.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, the wall is just a symbol to a lot of people. It's effective immigration policy so that you have people here who are citizens of the United States. They're people who we want to have access here to get jobs. You know, part of what happened in California, we used to have these agricultural workers come here because the agricultural industry needed people to come here on temporary work permits and then they stopped going home. So that's sort of one of the historical things that started this. But I think we need, we need immigration reform. Whether there's a wall or not is more of a function. or not, is more of a function of, is it going to work, or if it's just something that politicians like to say, because it sounds like thing, something that people understand.
Build a wall and paperwork.
Yeah. Okay.
So, we're a couple of minutes here past 8 o'clock. I want to be respectful of everyone's time. I think we only have the room till 8 o'clock, so I want to be respectful to the staff here and our friend in the back, you can't see, who's filming us right now. We can do one more? One more?
Yeah, let's do one more.
Okay, one more.
Okay with the staff.
And then again, we'll respond to everyone's questions who we didn't get to in writing. So, the next question's from John Carr. He says, "Congressman, problem, problems that each representative wants, if there's a problem, each representative wants things for his or her constituency. That can, that can lead to a park, a bill, et cetera. How do you, how do you balance our regional needs in once with what is best for the country?"
I think that's part of the way the system's set up. I'm, we're, it's representative democracy. I am supposed to represent you. When you come to me with ideas, if I agree with them, I try to find a way to implement them. I don't, it's not a, you know, in the old days, having grown up in Massachusetts, it was, you know, can you get me a job that I don't have to go to every week? In California, we don't have that, thankfully, and generally around the country, we don't have that anymore. So, I think representative democracy is that we do things like this, and we try to persuade each other what's in all of our best interest. When I was in the legislature, we had a thing every year was that there ought to be a law, and constituents would bring us all these wonderful laws, and I look back on them and think, those were some of the best things that I was a party to. And I'd like to do it, I'd like to do it at the federal level, but there's got to be a big sort of truth and honesty thing about, "We want you to give us ideas for laws, but the probability of it ever happening is very remote." So, I will end there. I apologize, we have so many left. I have to work on the PowerPoint a little bit. We will answer them all. If you're not satisfied with the answer, feel free to contact the office. I'm also available. When I'm here, I'm happy to have office one-on-one meetings. We do mobile district office hours every other month, at the very least. They're on Saturdays, and they're from 10 until 1, usually 11 till 1. We just had one in Moraga, so look to our website and our Facebook page for that. So, and then just lastly, thank you for coming, thank you for being civil, and this is the essence of democracy, so I appreciate you being here.